Thanks for joining us today. We continue our coverage on the Odessa City Council fallout.
That's right, Joe. They're actually holding a special meeting today, actually in just a couple of minutes, to further discuss the employment of city manager Michael Marrero and city attorney Natasha Brooks. But today, we'll actually include public comment.
Yes, so here's a little recap on how we got here. So on December 13th, the Odessa City Council voted in a closed session to fire city manager Michael Marrero and city attorney Natasha Brooks without public comment. So of course, this sparked a lawsuit by Odessa attorney Gavin Norris against the city for violations of civil procedure.
Now, this was actually just the last of several reasons that Norris has chosen to sue the city over what he claims are the illegal actions of Mayor Javier Hoven and the council's "tactic approval" of those actions. Because of that lawsuit, a judge did issue a restraining order on the council's decision, which took place January 3rd, that technically gave Marrero and Brooks their jobs back. But just one day later, on the 4th, the restraining order was rescinded after the city lawyered up. That means that Marrero and Brooks are still fired until further notice. Now, that same day of the rescinded restraining order, the Odessa City Council announced that they would actually hold a special session today on the termination of Marrero and Brooks and to begin the search process for a new city manager and city attorney. Now, respectively, this time with public comment, as we said. Now, with that, we're going to go ahead and listen in on the city council meeting that is starting up as we speak.
My name is Gary Touchover. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm just going to look down and read. I didn't even write it all right. So, thank you for your time. I didn't pay much attention to local politics in the past. In fact, only in the last few years have I even understood that's where the real change happens, is local politics. Once I understood this and I started watching and paying attention, my first experience with politics was your mayoral race, which was a crazy one to be part of. I had known Mr. Bryant for many years, and I'd had numerous interactions with him on a daily basis. It got stellar. So when I heard he was running, I was excited. And then I also met you and your wife around that start of the race, and you are both kind of polite to me and my boys. So I was like, "Cool, let's see how this goes." During that whole campaign, you know, there was just a lot of smearing, a lot of things that were happening against Mr. Bryant that I was pretty surprised about, but I thought, "Well, it's local politics, I guess. I'm new to this. Let's just see where it goes." Either way, we all know how it ended up. Congratulations on the win. Since then, I've kind of been paying attention, had a pulse on some of the things that are happening and some of these local politics issues. I recently came to a meeting last week, what I like to call King Hoven's Court. And I gotta say, man, I hope you guys have it together, because at one point, I was really concerned. I literally heard you acknowledge that you wanted to change the way that it has always been done and switch the power dynamic in our city government from a strong city manager and a figurehead mayor, switched around. And the excuse just seemed like it was because we've always done it and we can do it better. And we can do things better, I agree with that, but I don't think that that's the way it should be, at least not without our consent, not without us knowing what we need to be doing. I just really wanted to come and say that this has been a circus, and I see clips and videos of pettiness and arguing and bipartisan things that none of that stuff, like, we need to be working together, right? We don't need to be partisan. We need to be making decisions based on what we want, right? Because that's, you guys work for us, basically. I've been in the service business forever, and this service is not what I want to pay for. So I hope that when they do this audit and all these other things, that everything's the way it needs to be. I hope that that contract that we're connected to does advise in the rear. But I really just wanted to come up and say that I need this ridiculousness to stop, petty comments and such. We need to be communicating with each other, we need to be acting in our best interest and not pushing our own personal agendas. That's pretty much it.
Take your seats. Mike Perrin.
Mr. Perrin, I have one question.
Yes?
Do you want to be able to speak on all four items, five items?
Yes, on the four items.
So 1, 2, 4? 1, 2, 5?
And be 1, 2, 5. Okay, sorry.
No, not at all. I'm just trying to clarify your, you know...
Okay. Yeah, well, my name is Michael Perrin. I'm 71 years old. I grew up here in Odessa. My grandparents came to Odessa in 1922, 101 years ago, so we're nearly local. We're nearly local. Seen a lot of things come and go. Been really unhappy with the way recent events have unfolded here in the city of Odessa. Now, I'm going to exempt my own counsel, Mr. Vasquez. He's done just as I wished for him to do. And so what I would like for you to do is to, instead of all, I mean, these are small sentences that have big actions. So I would urge you to not act on these issues today, but to only begin by evaluating your city attorney and the city manager. Like I said, I taught 21 years. I never, in my life, did all of that at once, right? The kids did the assignment, I picked it up, I graded it, turned it back, did tutoring. There's a process. This is just an all-in-one inclusive deal, it seems to me, where I had, I mean, I don't know, we're just on some sort of a time schedule here, or there's some critical deal, or the city's going to fall into the abyss if we don't act on all these things today. All right? So I would, I would ask that you not do the other menu items here and strictly begin the evaluation process, if you think that's necessary. Thank you.
Austin Keath. My name is Austin Keath, mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to discuss this morning about Michael Marrero and Natasha. I support for them. Over the years, and I'm not trying to be seicious here, but I served on many boards. I've served on OBC, served on Grove, served on various nonprofits out here in the community. But I've had interaction with Michael and Natasha, and everything's been professional and well-run by what they do. I know that she cannot respond to my questions, but I do want to present the issue of why completely new council members in their first meeting would vote to terminate two individuals if they had no chance to interact with them. They didn't need to get to speak probably with Michael or Natasha, and I don't know that for sure. But wouldn't it have been prudent, like the gentleman before me said, to table this issue so that the new council members could have a chance to sit down and talk with Natasha and with Michael and maybe also be able to go and talk with other department heads? Also, councilman Wyatt, last year voiced a concern that they needed to do the evaluations. Our mayor here objected. I thought that was pretty unusual, because he said it wasn't even on the agenda. He had no idea. This agenda's supposed to just like today, 72 hours in advance. Y'all know what's going to be on the agenda. And why didn't the mayor want this done? These evaluations came out positive, I believe, for both people, for Natasha and for Michael Marrero. So what are we setting ourselves up here? You know, our mayor now has signed off on a $300,000-plus contract. You know, what's it going to cost us overall in this process right now? Because I'm kind of worried here. I mean, we talk about, we got this group here that wants to cut money and not spend money, but yet, now we're going to be spending money, and we don't even know what the final cost will be. Thank you for your time.
Gavin Norris. First, I'd say, thank you for the opportunity to speak where you're not violating our rights. It shouldn't have to take a lawsuit. And Mr. Mayor, when I stood before you all the last time, first, I'd say this, I stand by everything that I said the last time we were here. It shouldn't take us threatening you to file a lawsuit, actually filing the lawsuit, for you to do the right thing. We expect that of you. That's what we've elected each one of you all to do. And if you're hell-bent on not doing that, we'll keep filing lawsuits. When I tell you that, for sure, we have at least three other lawsuits we're going to file, we're going to file. Mr. Mayor, when I looked you in the aisle at the last meeting and I said, "We're going to file lawsuits," you shook your head and made kind of smirk his faces, but as the old folks would say, "Some people don't believe that fat meat is greasy." So if you don't believe that, we're going to file. I promise you, we will. Most importantly, our issues that you are, as Mr. Keath said, and I stand behind everyone that's addressed this council before, for the two councilmen who are just elected, respectfully, y'all don't know where the bathroom is. So how do you evaluate and terminate someone who you've never even had a chance to interact with? That's our issue. I would reiterate what our constituents sent us here to say first, is that they support Michael, they support Natasha. I understand that today, our request may fall on deaf ears for you not to fire them, but let me make sure that, I would tell you this, if Natasha were here, she would tell you that you couldn't violate our rights. She would tell you that just because you're doing this today, which is a silly meeting, because you should have done this right in the first place, but she'd tell you, "Just because you're doing this today doesn't mean our lawsuit goes away. It's still going." And I've had the opportunity to talk to your attorney, I think he's a nice guy, and, but understand, we're not, this will continue until you all decide to do the right thing. Put aside your personal politics, your petty agendas. The thing we want to make sure, if Natasha were here, she would tell you, and I think Michael would back her up, that what you're doing today, the law says it's not retroactive. So essentially, if you're going to fire them today, you're firing them today. So that means that then, make sure they get paid. We don't want to file another lawsuit because of the, what we've heard now, that Dan, that you said you're going to keep them tied up in litigation and need extra money that they get, then we have to pay that attorney fees. We're prepared to file a lawsuit on that, too. We've looked at their contracts, and we're ready to file a lawsuit on that. Please understand, you don't get rid of good people just because you don't like them. Personality conflicts, that happens here in every business. So we ask you today, consider what you're doing. Thank you, by the way, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Vasquez. Thank you all for standing up and doing the right thing. It takes a lot of courage to stand up, even if you're standing alone, and we understand y'all don't have the votes. So thank y'all for doing that.
Meryl Willis, good morning. I'm not surprised that we're here this morning, but I'm glad that we're here, because that says, based on the lawsuit, what you did was wrong. What you did was in violation of the very agenda that was placed before you that night, and that was wrong. So I'm thankful that we have an opportunity for our voices to be heard, because my mom and my dad fought very hard that we have the right to speak. I served on this city council. I was not in town, but as I watched the meeting take place, I immediately knew that there was a violation when the people were not allowed to speak. Why it was done, I don't know. The firing of Michael and Natasha was not news to me, because when some of you guys came into office, it was very clear that that was your agenda. You just waited until you had enough votes to do it. It was very clear. The mayor often speaks about leaks. If it's something that you're proud of and you can stand up and be proud to stand behind, it's not a leak, it's a fact. So the very fact that there's leaks, I would warn you, that there are what the mayor turns "leaks" right in your own party, right in your own meetings, whether they're good meetings, whether they're meetings that are correct, or whether they're false meetings. There are people who bring that out. So don't be afraid of the leaks, Mr. Mayor, because even your best friends could possibly be giving information. To speak, I'm appalled that you guys, new council members, would just not even study the facts to know what your rights are, what you are elected to represent the people for. Don't just be cookie cutters. Don't just go with the mayor and these other people are telling you. Study the facts. Know what's right, know what you're agreeing to an agenda. Know that you have an obligation to the people. Mr. Haney, I served, you took my place, and I thought that my district was in good hands. I expect you to study. I expect you to not just be a cookie cutter for the mayor and these other councilmen. You're above that. You're smarter than that. You say, "This is the day the Lord has made." Indeed, he's given you that opportunity to make the right choices and to do the right things. There is a mass exodus with this city, and I want the citizens to know that it's not because they all chose to retire, or that they all were ready to retire. It's just that they don't want to be a part of the mess that's going on. They don't want to be a part that they have to say yes to everything, or they're gone. They don't want to be a part of that. None of this is a surprise. It happened two years ago. Less than a year ago, we also knew that Dan was being primed for this position, so it's not a surprise, but it's a wrong thing that you did. You guys sat in a meeting with me to evaluate these two positions that were fired and would probably be done in that same way, and you agreed that they had done a good job. I'll be back on the next agenda, because I dare to speak on that.
Jean Collins.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, city secretary, city manager, city attorney. I'm Jean Collins, a native of Odessa, Texas. I'm also a pastor, own the business for nearly 40 years in downtown Odessa. I've served on several boards for the city and got several projects done for the good of Odessa. And quite frankly, I'm appalled at the situation we find ourselves in now. I'm getting calls from all over the state of Texas. I was interviewed by the Texas Tribune about Odessa, Texas, a city that I put a lot of time in to make a great city and to have us being spotlighted for the mess that's been created here. As a pastor, I'm concerned about the morale of the city, of the city employees, of the decisions that are made in private. And I have had the privilege of working with Michael Marrero for numerous years. Some of the projects that we did, especially in South Odessa, were not originally accepted as necessary, but because of the time and effort we put in, we were able to convince an unbiased council that they were good projects. That's what government is all about. When I was a student at Baylor, majoring in public administration, we learned that we had to have the public's confidence. We represented all the people, whether we agreed with them or not. I think this community is always an explanation as to why these people were terminated. Was it for cause, or was it for some other reason? You don't have to be specific, but for cause puts it in another category. You have to do certain things and show that there was a violation of the contract. Of course, you have other reasons, but a good administrator looks at how that's going to affect what you're trying to do. Mr. Mayor, you said you wanted to go in a different direction.
Mr. Cleaver?
Mr. Mayor, please, if we could, yield my three minutes to Mr. Collins' place.
That's what I wanted to check. You've got three more minutes, sir.
Thank you. You said you wanted to go in a different direction. There is really no competition between what the council does, what the city manager does, and the city attorney does, as long as they stay in their lane. City manager is responsible for the day-to-day activities of the various departments and what have you. You, if you want to go into a different direction, all you have to do is get the votes necessary by this body and change that direction. I haven't seen really anything positive since y'all have been in office, but a bunch of bickering. Y'all removed me from the OBC without pause, and I'm the one that really started the OBC in the city of Odessa. So if you want to go in a different direction, tell me what you dislike. Are you concerned that we're expanding Odessa, increasing the tax base? Are you concerned about the parks and recreation? That we have exemplary examples of that, to proudly show other folks what is it and what direction do you want to go, and what's prohibiting you from getting there? I don't believe the city manager or the city attorney is a roadblock to what y'all decide you want to do. But I think because of the last two years, you haven't really done anything, that you are using them as a scapegoat, as a scapegoat. I've never had any problem with issues that they didn't even agree with, but we sat down, like mature men and women, and discussed them. And once we agreed upon it, we went forward. That's how a city works. You don't come in with personal agendas. You may have personal preferences, but it takes all of you to decide what's best for constituents that you have met with and have discussed these issues with. So I'm concerned, and I'm really disappointed now, because I'll continue to get calls. Our headquarters of NAACP in Washington, DC called me and asked what's going on in Odessa, Texas. There have been implications of impropriety, too. And I want to say to the new council members, do you want to go down that road if you really didn't do anything or have anything to do with those decisions? There are lanes in which we operate. And, Mr. Mayor, I hope you'll recognize and respect those lanes. I would hate for a criminal investigation because of impropriety to be cast above this council. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Angie Keen. Let me begin by thanking all of you for your willingness to serve our community. There is a concern among the citizens of Odessa regarding the dismissal of city manager Michael Marrero. Based on his evaluations through the years, Mr. Marrero performed at an exceptional level in regard to his responsibilities as a city manager. Yet it appears that as soon as the mayor could control the votes of enough council members, Mr. Marrero was terminated. There seems to be no other logical explanation as to why any new council member would vote for his termination. There is no documentation of Marrero having shortcomings. There is no information available to the public that reveals any sort of incompetency. In fact, there is no information available to the citizens of Odessa that offers any explanation as to why Marrero would be terminated. Furthermore, upon his termination, the mayor entered into a contract with a consulting firm that will cost the city at a minimum over $350,000. While I believe in using consultants for many reasons, the contract, which was signed in mid-December, was not discussed with at least two council members, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Vasquez. Mr. Mayor, do the citizens of District 2 and District 3 not matter to you? I live in District 3, and I'm deeply concerned that my council representative was not allowed to engage in discussion before he signed a contract with the consulting firm. There are no details available about this firm. You avoided discussion last week in the work session regarding the situation. Which all that means to us as citizens is that you do not care about representation for the citizens in District 2 and District 3. Mr. Marrero is an excellent city manager. He possesses the professional skills and professional background to work for the city of Odessa. He has a heart for this community. If there is a need to remove him from his position, as others have requested today, the citizens deserve to hear that information. Nothing has been presented to the members of the community in regards to why you want him terminated. Our community, Mr. Mayor, faces very serious and real needs. Did you know that our poverty level in Odessa, Texas, is 43% higher than the national average? Did you know that our adult literacy is 34% below the national average? And did you know that the rate for uninsured citizens in Odessa, Texas, below the age of 64 is 70% higher than the national average? Are we engaging in conversation with our medical leaders regarding that situation? I'm frustrated that our new council members were so quick to make a decision.
Thank you very much. I've got two members here that want to be able to speak for the council. They didn't put on any item. Thomas Pauls, you want to address the council? On what item, sir? On item 1?
You just pick, you pick which item you want me to speak.
Okay, item 1. Do you want to speak on all five, sir?
I'll speak on all five. Thank you for seeing us this morning. I'm here really to ask why. Why? Can you really give a... You know, it was in October that we went into the chamber in there and we evaluated our five employees. The city council has five employees that work directly for them. We evaluated four of them out of five that day. Mr. Monta, you gave Michael rating reviews. Ms. Swanner, you gave Ms. Brooks rating reviews. And the mayor refused to speak at all. Mr. Thompson was there, he saw it. And so finally, when you get enough support that you can do whatever you do, you fire the guy. We've had two retirements of department managers in the last couple of weeks. Mayor, where were you? Don't you represent this city? Don't you care about our fire chief? About our public works department? You weren't, you didn't even want them. You weren't either, Mr. Monta. You weren't either, Ms. Swanner. Where were you? You know, all of a sudden, it's not important to you. You know what you've done to the morale of this city, of the city employees? Do you know what you've cost us? We know at least a third of a million dollars. I have no idea what the attorney's going to cost us. I haven't heard that figure. I haven't heard what all these different consultants are going to cost us, but I'll bet you, when you get it all added up, we're talking about 3/4 of a million bucks. And that's tough on some people that campaigned on the promise to save the taxpayer money. I'd be ashamed. I'd be ashamed to treat people like that. You guys that didn't know, Mr. Haney, Mr. Collins, you didn't know anything about it until you fired, you voted to fire. So where are you? You can tell me, because... Because this is an agenda item, you can respond to me. And I want to know why. Why did you do that? We have a better city than that. This is going to take us two years to get back on our feet. At least.
At least two years.
You can respond to me, Mr. Monta. This isn't an agenda item. Mr. Haney, you can respond to me. This isn't an agenda item. Either one of you two want to respond?
I will respond to you. I have not given evaluation in the last evaluation. You just called me out, and we were in executive session, mind you.
Well, that's okay. I can tell what happened.
Three minutes are up.
It's a... I think you need to reevaluate what you're doing here.
Thank you, Mr. Sprouse.
He's going to cut me off when you speak against him?
You're not speaking against me, sir. But we have a lot of secrets here.
Mr. Mayor, you get 180 seconds. If you're for him, you might get...
Thank you very much, Mrs. Sprouse. Ms. Morales, you have a card. You didn't fill out... Do you want to speak on any agenda items?
On item 5.
Okay.
My name is Sabada Morales, and I'm going to try to talk without being so angry because I've been helping him a lot. The last time we were here on December 13th, they outdid the firing of the city secretary and the city manager. It kind of haunted me how you made them leave like if they were criminals. Like if they did something so bad to the city that they needed to exit right then and there. That you even had their interns ready to be seated in the city council hall. That was amazing to me. But you know, it doesn't surprise me much with the things that you do, Javier.
Mayor?
And the things that y'all do, it's just, what morals are you bringing to our city? What are you doing for us? Nothing but causing division and problems in our city. That's what you do. And that's what a lot of your other followers do also. Is cause a lot of division. It's painful to see what goes on. But you know, a wise man once said, "Be careful who you let on your ship, because some of those people will sink it if they cannot be a captain." And obviously, you couldn't do what you wanted to do, so you had to make sure you have your councilmen come on and be able to vote them out. Because you couldn't do it alone with the last council that you had. And I know they didn't retire because they didn't want to do the job anymore. They were tired of the politics that came along with it. And I wanted to say to you, Mr. Javier, you know, whenever you stated to me that I would not win my campaign because I don't have the money, well, I can guarantee you will not win your next campaign in 24 because you will not have the support.
Very much. To consider and take any and all possible action to evaluate termination of the city attorney Natasha Brooks. We have a lot of people that want to be able to speak on this item. So, let's go through this again. Mike DePere. On item 2. Do you have a card? Did you want to speak on item 2?
Oh, I did. Oh, yes, I did.
You got three minutes, sir.
Yeah. No, I really would urge the council to simply table this matter at this time until an orderly process can be put into place. And that would start with an evaluation. A formal evaluation goes from there. And if the evaluation turns out good, then that would be the end of it, right? So, that's all I'm asking you to do. It's not... I mean, if it comes out bad and they still got fired, then all you've done is lose a few days, right? And if it turns out that they don't need to be fired, but instead should be retained, then you have prevented yourself from making a horrible mistake. And that's all I'm interested in on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Willis, item 2. I'm sorry to call you the next speaker. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mayor Willis, and I would simply say, Mr. Conlon, Mr. Haney, the people that you have fired and possibly will fire again today, you've not even had a chance to know who they are. You've not had a chance to evaluate their work. What that leads me to believe is that you maybe can't stand on your own. And if you can't stand on your own, you certainly should not be sitting in those seats. Because it has to tell questions. They may even stand on their own, make their own decision without being strong on, possibly, by a mayor or other councils, possibly. So, I can be legal. I can tell you of an assurance that this is not new. Some of these members came into this with the agenda to fire Natasha. Natasha is a very intelligent employee, and was a very intelligent employee. She has good moral ethic standards. Possibly, if you say no, then you're on the cutting block. If you're not a yes person, you're on the cutting block. You have family members who work. You all have family members who work. You yourselves work. Would you want to be handled this way? Would you want to be handled this way? Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, for being able to stand up for what you believe is right. Or, Mr. Vasquez, in your case, to give an opportunity to know what is right about an employee. I applaud Ms. Brooks for the work she's done, having served on council with her. I know it was not always an easy job. I know it was a tough job, especially when she had to tell some members no. I know it was a tough job. But she stood the ground, and she stood by the law. And that's what we can ask of a city attorney, is to stand by the law. Not to find ways to circumvent the law. Not to be in an office creating a workplace that may not be the most advantageous for employees. These are human beings. These are human beings with families. Dan, you're a human being, and you have a family. You have an obligation to do better. He may say leaks. It's not leaks again. It's out there. We know what's going on. And it's not leaks. It's just out there. Mr. Haney, Mr. Conlon, think about that. You don't even know these people that you're firing. I hear that Mr. Conlon may have said his constituents told him. Who are they? Are they here to speak? Are they here to say that Ms. Brooks did a bad job? This happened. This was in the minds of these people two years ago when they came on office. So, don't be fooled. Don't be fooled. These are some good people. Natasha's a very good attorney. And, you know, if your actions are not stalled today and you continue, she will be okay. I can assure you that Natasha L. Brooks will rise. Because she's a woman. She's a black woman, and we rise.
Mr. Sprouse?
Thank you, Mayor. Council here. I still have the same question. Exactly what is it that you saw that you... And incidentally, Ms. Swann, I am able to speak about what happens in executive session? I can legally do that. Can I do it?
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, let me tell you about the things... And I mentioned earlier about the things the mayor will do. If you're for him, you can speak five, six minutes. If you're against him, you get 180 seconds. And he'll limit you quickly. I saw him scold Ms. Brooks for bringing a draft of an ordinance that we were talking about, we were discussing. And across the topic, it says draft. And he scolded her for bringing him a draft. Our mayor doesn't even know what a draft of an ordinance is. Until it gets passed, it's a draft. He didn't know. He scolded her for that. And I really think that had nothing to do with whether it had drafted across there or not. It had to do with him trying to build a case for Ms. Brooks. And it's wrong. You know, in your next two years, y'all will get to see him spout this long discourse. He can spout a word salad that would make Kamala Harris jealous. He would really give a whole peaceful... So, I just want you to think about your following into all of this.
You know, I didn't know Mrs. Brooks very well, but I know as much she carried herself when I would see her in the public. She was a very fine woman who carried herself very well. I got to see Michael a lot. And that would see him in a lot of places where Javier wouldn't even go. You're supposed to be for the people, correct? And you fire a city manager who would go to events where you wouldn't even step foot in, especially in the Hispanic community. But you tend to fire someone that's there to represent the community that he comes from that you cannot even go and do. That's a shame. You know what we call you in the Hispanic community? A coconuts. Because you can't even stand for your own community. And it's a shame that you sit there and you can't do that to someone who has not done nothing wrong.
Wrong item 2. To consider and take any and all possible action to evaluate, terminate, deport the city attorney Natasha Brooks. Counsel, discussion.
May I be questioned, Ms. Haney?
Ms. Swann?
I'm moved that we terminate the city attorney Natasha Brooks effective immediately.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion to six. Counsel, do we have any discussion? Mr. Counsel? Counsel, Thompson, sir.
Again, I've said it 13 times. I know that. For more, this is a tragedy. It's a... I believe, strongly believe that this is always behind closed doors. And I don't appreciate giving sue because of your actions. She is a fine lady. If she did anything that needs to be... Ms. Sprouse?
Counsel, my mother?
Okay.
Counsel, my mother's?
No comments.
Counsel, Conlon? Counsel, Haney? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Item 2, to consider and take any and all possible action to evaluate, terminate the appointment of the city attorney Natasha L. Brooks. All in favor, indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, indicated by saying nay?
Nay.
Motion passes back to two. Moving on to item 3, to consider and take any and all possible action to evaluate, terminate, deport the city manager Michael Marrero. We have people that want to be able to speak on this. Mrs. Sprouse?
No comment.
Okay. Mr. Conlon?
No comment.
Mrs. Willis?
I always have a comment.
Mayor Willis, again, this is no surprise. Two years ago, when you died's campaign, and we led you to office, it was all over the city of Odessa that your first item on your agenda was to fire Michael. So, congratulations. Any and all, be careful of that, Dan. Any and all, you gave an illustration of being at the Empire State Building and the mayor being able to do any and all. That's absolutely not true. So, just be careful of it. Michael represented the city well. Did he have flaws? Probably. Do you guys have flaws? Probably. Do I have flaws? Absolutely. But I just believe that people are people. I believe that people should be treated fairly. I believe that when we say that we are Christians, that we should do that in word of deed. And that includes treating people fairly, giving people a fair opportunity. I don't think that's been done in the case of Mr. Marrero. But again, I will assure you that, as with anything, as with any of your dismissals if you've ever been dismissed, you continue on, wipe those on, you know, and they'll be okay. So, if you feel like you've dug them in the side and pierced them in the side, if you haven't, they're going to be okay. The mayor has publicly went after Michael from the podium. Hope that doesn't happen to you, because these are people. These are humans. They have hearts. I believed in some of you guys more than now I do. Unfortunately, you've proven who you are. And as one boy says, when someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time. And I believe that. I believe that of some of you. I'm going to take all my three minutes. So, tell me when I'm up. If I just have to stand here, I'll take my three minutes. But I want to remind you that Michael was a good city manager. He wasn't a yes man, and I know that for yes woman. I know that's what you guys are looking for. And hopefully, you find it. Hopefully, with having all yes men, you get something done for the city. Because what you have to realize is that the city manager, Gaby, has to be for the entire city. Not for the mayor. Not for just the council. But looking out for the entire city of Odessa. And that's what we elect these people to do. And then as the government, they currently have, although it may change, but the currently strong city manager, you lead some of that. And so, we're calling upon you, not to be a cookie cutter as well, but to have a strong sense of what this city needs and move forward. Don't let the squad direct your... And you know who they are. It's well-known. Don't let them direct your decisions. Michael was a very significant person. Thank you, Mrs. State Secretary.
Mayor? No comment. Suzanne Morris?
Mr. Don, it is... Whenever you... City attorney. Whenever you stated it was, you know, you can take it all, you can do whatever you need, and y'all voted for the last one, December 13th. Yes, you get your plans together, Javier. Then you come back, and you address the council, and you let them know that you have contracts and you have ideas of what things you want to do to take place. You don't go about yourself and get a contract and deposit money in there and sign the city into that agreement. That's where you get it wrong. So, I know the contract for T2 was to help Mr. Agabe with his training and to see if we even need the city attorney, a city manager's position. To see what it was even for. Is it even in place? I think the next time you do that, us taxpayers want to know where you spend our money before you start signing any contract. And the council would like to know before you start signing any contract and spending the money in places where you didn't even ask us if we want to spend $24,000 a month plus the annual $288,000 a year.
Item 3, to consider and take any and all possible action to evaluate, terminate, deport the city manager Michael Marrero. I make a motion to take... To consider taking any and all possible action to evaluate, terminate, deport the city manager Michael Marrero. That's important, a motion. I have a second. I have a second, but Counselor Mr. Haney? Counsel, any discussion? Any discussion? One more?
One more time. And I resent all of this tremendously. This is all salt and blum. Behind closed doors. I was never consulted, advised on any interim person. Nothing about the contract, the right of the file. So, I don't believe that we're being honest here. Mr. Haney spouts Christianity every day. And I find it hypocritical. It doesn't live up to what he says. And I find it hypocritical, it doesn't live, but what he says. And that goes for everybody else, because it doesn't seem to be right. Except in your own eyes, nobody else's eyes. So I'm not saying this.
Respond to this.
Go ahead.
I am a very Christian man. I don't make any decision unless I pray God. I do not make any decision unless I pray God. And I cannot believe you called me out on my Christianity. Sir, I beg your pardon, but I am who I am. And I'll always.
Second.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, indicated by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion passes back to two. Going to move on to item four. Consider taking any and all possible actions to appoint interim city attorney and to begin the search process for the position of city attorney. We have people that want to be able to speak on this. Mr. Wallace.
No comment.
Mr. Collins. Ms. Willis.
Mayor Willis, I'm not going to take all three of my minutes, Mr. Secretary, at this point. I just want to, as you consider the replacements, I know that this has already been done, but you had in place an assistant city manager who has qualified to move this city forward. He was overlooked for someone who now you have to pay to train to be an assistant city manager, a city manager. This, this, I don't know if he's here or not, but he was hired on, he's had years of experience as an assistant city manager, could move our city forward easily without having to spend 300 and something thousand dollars to train. He was not even considered, is my understanding, for someone, Gaby, no disrespect, we know each other very well, but someone who is not properly equipped nor meets the standards of what the job application says should be the qualifications for a city manager. So you made that decision, but you overlooked someone who could move our city forward with experience without spending this amount of money. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mike.
Just have a couple of minutes. And again, Dan, I wish you well, but we already knew what was happening. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Savannah Morris. So item four, to consider and take any and all possible actions to appoint interim city attorney and to begin the search process for the position of city attorney. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint to interim city manager.
I'm sorry, are we on item four?
City Attorney, I'm sorry. Mr. Dan Jones, you begin the search process for the position of city attorney.
To have a formal motion for item four, Ms. Muntz.
Yes, Ms. Muntz.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second, by Councilmember Swine. Counsel, discussion?
I'd like for you to explain to me real quick how we start the search process when you were hired as consultant. I've seen the documents, your name's on it, Mr. Bernal's name's on it, Ms. Johnson's name's on it. And I believe this is, I believe this is illegal. I believe it's a bad contract. And I don't see how we get out of the 338,000 dollars that people are committed to without probably putting out an RFP to see if there's what options are out there. And there's as much in this contract about training Mr. Bernal as there is searching for a new city manager or city secretary.
Counsel, any further discussion?
Are we searching for this, for secretary also?
City attorney. This is, this is a process. And so begin the search process for the position of city attorney. This is the form of the motion. And so the thing is, is that we're codifying a vote today and we're going through the process. So this is essentially what we're doing right now. And speak about this at a later time in the future city council meeting. Certainly, we can have a one line discussion. Phone call with both of us. Any other further discussion? Any further comments? We have a motion to consider and take any and all possible action to appoint interim city attorney to Mr. Dan Jones and to begin the search process for a position of city attorney. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, indicated by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion passes back to two. Going to move on to item five, to consider and take any and all possible action to appoint interim city manager and to begin the search process for the position of city manager. We have those that want to be able to speak. Savannah Morris. Mr. Wallace.
No comment.
Mr. Collins. Michael Perry. Ms. Willis.
Mayor Willis, I'd just like to comment and say dito to what Councilmember Thompson said. I believe there are documents to prove that this person was hired right after this decision was made. Contracts were signed. I don't know how to go about un-signing the contract that was signed probably the day after. This action was illegally taken. But I'm sure that there are ways around everything as we witnessed today. Thank you.
So on item five, to consider and take any and all possible, I make a motion to take, to consider and take any and all possible action to appoint interim city manager, Mr. Agapit, and to begin the search process for the position of city manager. That's a formal motion. Do we have a second? I have a second by Councilmember Haney. Counsel, do we have any discussion? Any comments? Counsel, time for a second. Counsel, last. Come on out. Ms. Muntz. All in favor, indicated by saying nay.
Aye.
All opposed, indicated by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion passes back to two. Seeing that there is no more visiting before this city council, do I have a motion for a third?
Tell me.
And there you have it. The city council of Odessa has just voted again. Angelina, there was no difference in the turnout from the previous vote. They voted five to two to terminate City Attorney Natasha Brooks and City Manager Marco Marrero. And they also voted five to two to appoint Dan Jones as the interim city attorney and start the search process for a new city attorney. And also five to two to appoint Agapito Bernal as the interim city manager. And again, to start the, a search for a new city manager.
I mean, it almost seems like this was the same thing that we saw in December, except for a lot of people speaking out this time.
There were a lot of people.
We had a lot of very passionate speakers out there. So as you heard from some of the public comments, calls on focus for change, some connection between the public, also the city council, because there's still a lot of question as to why Michael Marrero and Natasha Brooks were even fired in the first place. There has been concern over money as well. And also, the lawyer Gavin Norris had spoken up about that, too.
That's right. Actually, Attorney Gavin Norris was the fourth person to speak out for public comment. And he wasted no time. He flat out said that there are going to be at least three more lawsuits that he intends to file. And he actually dared the city council. He says, you don't think I'm going to file these lawsuits? Think again. So they're apparently ready to go and he's ready to follow suit, just like he did with the first lawsuit. There was huge, huge support for both Brooks and Marrero this morning. In fact, I don't think I heard one person comment in favor of these terminations.
Yeah, we heard a lot of mentions of professionalism between Marrero and Brooks, that they're very liked in the community. So still a lot of question as to why they were fired in the first place. And of course, that was something that we've been still struggling to get some answers for you. And we also heard from Gene Collins, a former member of the NAACP, also a pastor as well. He says he put a lot of years and projects within the city of Odessa. So of course, this was a really big disappointment for him. And then he basically told the council that, you know, ever since they took office, that nothing positive has really come from it. He actually said, it's just, quote, "a lot of bickering." So again, questions still remain on the firings for Marrero and Brooks. But as Victor just said, I mean, it's on to the interim and then the search for a permanent.
And then the search for the permanence. And, you know, among all the public comments, there was several, one of the, seems to be one of the more popular comments that was being said was that this new council, who was recently elected, had no ties. They had not worked with Marrero or with Brooks before. And then they just, all of a sudden, they go from rave reviews in October with the old council to suddenly getting fired in December under the new council. That was a comment that was brought up by more than one person in the city council meeting.
Yeah, and I mean, we're gonna have a lot of reaction from a lot of people in the community, as you can imagine, a lot of disappointment because, as we just saw, a lot of people speaking out and just being, you know, I mean, you saw, Mayor Javier Hoven was in hot water. So we're just gonna have to follow up with us and get some reaction today. So be sure to stay with News West Nine at four, five, six, and 10 today. And be sure to download the News West Nine app. We'll, of course, keep you updated on the situation and anything that moves forward from there.
And don't forget, you can see this live stream again on all of our live streaming formats. And, okay, actually, they are telling us just now that we actually have a live interview standing by at the Odessa City Council. Let's go ahead and go with, I believe it's Alex Camerata in City Council Chambers.
Until we can be on smooth ground again. I mean, if we get other people coming in, they have to learn the city, the processes, the people. By then, this council will have gone through some votes and will be at a standstill for several years if, if we don't do something. So we are really talking with people to see what our next move is going to be. We're not finished based on this committee. I think we're gonna see what we can do and see if we can get back on solid, solid ground.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, sir.
And that, of course, was Gene Collins. So you mentioned earlier, previous, several ties with the Odessa community for many, many, many years. Very active in the community, a pastor and active in the NAACP chapter there in Odessa.
Yeah, so as we told you earlier, he was the one that was saying that he hasn't seen anything positive since the council had been elected. But once again, this was a five to two vote. So once again, we had the city councilmen Thompson and Vasquez who voted against.
Yeah, basically, nothing changed from the last meeting. The same council members who voted in favor of the firings voted in favor. The same ones that voted against voted against. And the vote was the same, the outcome was the same. The only difference this go around was that they actually had the public comment and they did not adjourn to executive session.
Yeah, and as you heard, I mean, some people were speaking over that three minute mark and a lot of passionate comments and people who were in support of Michael Marrero and Natasha Brooks. So as you can imagine, very disappointment, a big disappointment for a lot of people who were supporting the former city manager and the former.
Okay, and actually, let's, we're gonna go back to the city council chambers. We have Mayor Javier Hoven standing by to talk to us as well.
Problem with that, that the city manager was trying to cover that up, is that?
I've not heard that. I've never heard that commentary and that there was no statement. I know from myself, anybody on the council that I'm aware of that ever made that comment. I can't not control what the commentary is out in the community. But I will answer one question when it comes to the game rooms. For the course of over a year, and it started back in July of '21, I did make a request of staff to be able to, and I asked for, how many game rooms we had in the city of Odessa currently at that time? This was summer of '21. Also, I asked what amount of money was being charged. I asked, what was the process to be able to even get a license? Because I didn't understand it. And so it was very detailed. And also, I also followed it up with how much money was being collected and to the point of what had the city of Odessa collected and when did it start? Never got a response. It was finally after six months or so that I finally went to the building and the collection and asked the department for that information. And I was given a list. And it went, and it started back in 2014, currently all the way to that point of 2021. It was in 20, it was when we, when we finally did the final ordinance, I once again asked for that, for that information that was never given forth, even though I already had it. So the thing is, is that there was this one question that I asked. I did ask the former city assistant city manager, Ms. Muncy, who is over the department that does the finances. And the question was simple to say this, can you show me where on the budget there's a line item where that money actually goes? Because there's statutory language of how the city expends that money, that money is being collected for game rooms, in this instance, being permanent, things of that nature. And so it was, the response was, it's in the budget and it's named as other line, other, other expense or other revenue, I'm sorry, other revenue. And that was the extent of it. Now, how it wind up, I, like I said, we can, I cannot control what the commentary is in the community, but I know from the mayor's office and from this council, we have never made any assumptions or accusations or inquiries that that was anything that had to do with it.
Oh, Mayor, I just guess like you, you've said you're trying to move the city forward. Can you, there's a lot of ambiguity around this decision. Can you just explain how Mr. Marrero and Ms. Brooks were standing in the way of this council moving the city forward?
There was a, some commentary here by some members, former members of the city council basically said that, well, no, I'm sorry, no, it was a community member, community organizer basically said that we've seen you do nothing. It's not for lack of an effort. I'm not going to completely disagree with that. There has been some things that we've done. We have made the city of Odessa a sanctuary city. We have removed the game rooms. It was a direct response to the community and this was with the prior council. We have moved forward with identifying and going out with affordable housing. We've made some positive changes. What has happened, along with the, some former city councils, that oftentimes when we ask for help, when we, there is a policy here that was passed by prior councils, in accordance to council and city manager's office, is that we are supposed to work hand in hand with policymaking. And so that wasn't occurring. There wasn't communication. At times, not only weeks, but months, no communication. And so the thing is, is that that was, that was one small basic assessment there. Now, moving forward, and moving forward in this manner, is that there are programs that we've been wanting to initiate and we're going to initiate. We had made a proposal to go out there and do a quality live committee. We wind up making that presentation. It fell on deaf ears for the last two years. We're gonna move forward with that in response to an assessment that we've been making over the two years, what the community has been saying. The city of Odessa has roads that need to be fixed. That infrastructure needs to be addressed. And that is simply that, two years ago, we put forward and this former council just would not move on. So the roads are an issue. We have water infrastructure that is desperately needs to be addressed. We are attributed $6 million to that as currency and that has been a process that we've done. But we really need to start addressing that and we're decades behind. We also need to start addressing youth sports. We need to address, there's been a big outcry for a kind of a sports complex. There has been a lot of developers and groups that have come forward that wanted to be able to address that. Once again, we put that on the committee two years ago with no response from this council and the day to day operations. The other thing is, is that one thing that we also have to address is communication. Communication with people coming to city hall and that they have their, we have, that we're listening to them. We have listened to them. This community asks for change. We are in that process, in that change, we're in that transition of that change. Sometimes the change is too fast for others, not fast enough. And sometimes it's in areas which they weren't expecting. But nonetheless, change is coming and change is gonna go forward. And we're gonna go as community as a whole. One of the things that we have to address is our abhorrent base. And that's where we're going to address and we are going into that and spent some time looking into it. And why are we falling behind on property taxes? Because every time we bring in a business, and we have spent millions, millions of dollars through ODC, and yet we're not seeing it as a result out there in the community. These are not my words, these are the community members. This is ridiculous. I grew up in this community. I too was part of the genesis of the ODC, not just Mr. Collins. We were all part of that. And the thing is, is that we have been both elated with the process and disappointed with the process. But the process needs to be more transparent. And these are the issues that we have been pushing for and seeking the last two years. And we have just felt one roadblock after another. Now, do I, do I assert it to one individual or two individuals? Not necessarily, but the thing is, is that everyone's culpable in this, in this area. And this is something that we have to correct.
Is the Masero part of that issue with, you know, the ODC? Is the NACRO part of that issue with, you know, the ODC wanted to give $2 million to...
The ODC did grant $2 million for jobs that were created in Houston, Texas. That's something that everybody missed.
Okay, so just a quick recap there. That was Mayor Javier Hoven saying that the former city manager, Michael Marrero, and the former city attorney Natasha Brooks were standing in the way in some roadblocks of some city projects. He also mentioned some roads, but we still have more reaction to get to this morning.
That's right. We have Christina Burgess standing by. She is actually talking to former city council member Thomas Sprouls. Let's go right there, right there to them now.
All right, and we're here with Mr. Tom Sprouls, former Odessa city councilman. Mr. Sprouls, we got to hear you at the podium this morning speak about, you know, we could tell a big reason why you showed up today. Tell us why you're here this morning.
I am in full support of Mr. Marrero and Ms. Brooks. Worked with them for four years, and they did an excellent job. Not one time have I heard anybody say anything derogatory about their actions or anything they may have done. And yet, so I'm saying, why are we doing this? We're going to spend, we know, a third of a million dollars on a consultant. We know we're going to spend, because of the way it was done, we're going to spend some six digits on an outside attorney, and, 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 you know, that's just the part of it. I suspect this is probably a million-dollar snafu we got going on here. We have these lawsuits we got to defend, so, you know, I don't know, I, but I can tell you, it'll run faster and higher than you think it would.
Yes, sir. And during your time serving on council, I'll ask you, was there anything that was leading towards this outcome of the firing of Mr. Marrero or Ms. Brooks? Any discussion?
Well, we all had heard the rumors that the incoming mayor did not like Mr. Marrero. We had all heard that. And you and I couldn't imagine, because there wasn't anything bad that I knew of that he had done. As a matter of fact, I came to realize he was very, very professional. He was very good at what he does.
Yes, sir. Were you, did you have the chance to attend the last meeting, the initial one that led to the firing of both Mr. Brook, Ms. Brooks and Mr. Marrero?
Yes.
And kind of your thoughts on that?
I was so incredibly angry that I was not able to speak before the vote, that I had to leave. It was, it was wrong. What they did was a travesty, I think illegal, and, you know, it was, just, and everybody should be angry.
Yes, sir. And I know we also today saw the same outcome, except this time you guys were able to give public comment. What were your thoughts on that? How you were...
Well, yeah, it's because some judge said we needed that. You know, to make this whole process legal, we have to do that. What did that cost us? What did it cost us to be here this morning? You know, it cost us something, and it, you know, so, therefore, this is going to be expensive.
Yeah. I, when you were at the podium, you had some questions that you were kind of posing to council, and you were like, you know, you guys can answer me, you know? What, what answers are you still wanting? What answers?
I still want to know why. Every one of them had to have a reason for voting to fire these two managers. Have you heard anything? I haven't heard anything. You know, so, and not yet have they stood up and said, "Yeah, here's the reason we did that." The mayor hasn't even done that. And it's wrong.
Yes, sir. Is there anything I didn't ask you, anything that you're wanting the public to know, any still questions you have for the mayor and regards to today's actions?
No, not right now.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Sprouls.
And so, there we go. The big answer still is why.
Yeah, that was a former councilman Sprouls, who was in support of Marrero and also Brooks at the same time. So, I mean, still a lot of questions as to, you know, why, and we have been getting the runaround as well since, you know, this first issue came up, the first time last month. So, we'll continue to follow that today. But let's recap it again. So, the vote was five to two to fire Marrero and also Natasha Brooks. So, now, it's on to getting the interims, and then they can move on to getting a professional...
That's right. Actually, they voted also today to appoint Dan Jones as the interim city attorney and Agapito Bernal, a selection process to find the permanent. And, you know, Gavin Norris, again, he's the one that got the lawsuit and everything rolling. He was one of the first ones to say that there is more lawsuits coming, so I don't think we've heard the end of this, this situation.
Yeah, we're going to continue to hear reaction. And just to recap, once again, that councilman Thompson and also Vasquez were the ones who voted against all of this. So, it's kind of the same thing that happened last month. But if you want to see this whole live stream, maybe you're just joining us now, be sure to log on to newswestnine.com. We also have this on our YouTube and our Facebook page.
And we'll have complete coverage coming up on four, five, six, and 10 on News West Nine, and we'll fill in whatever gaps, or try to answer whatever questions you may have, because I know we still have a lot of questions ourselves. Thank you for joining us.